Any citizen who wishes to address the commission shall first be recognized by the chair and shall give his or her name and address for the record. If a citizen wishes to read documentation of any sort to the commission, he or she shall first seek permission from the chair. Oral testimony may be restricted to no more than three minutes per person. First agenda item is the roll call and disclosure of conflict of interest, ex parte communication, and site visit. So, Aislinn, if you would call the roll and if each commissioner would please state your name, what area you are from, and anything you may need to disclose.
Jared Burnt.
My name is Jared Burnt. I live in the Highland area, and I made visits to Agenda Item Number Three, Four, and Five, and I have nothing else to report.
Jack Moore.
My name's Jack Moore, and I live in the Old Town area. I've made site visits to Three, Four, and Five Agenda Items, and I have nothing else to report.
Dorothy Ricks.
My name is Dorothy Ricks. I am from the Alameda area. I too made a site visit to Agenda Item Number Three, Four, and Five, and I have nothing else to report.
Julia Sanders.
My name is Julia Sanders. I live in the South Park area. I completed site visits to Agenda Items Three, Four, and Five, and have nothing further to report.
Ryan Satterfield.
I'm Ryan Satterfield from the Highland area. I also did a site visit for Items Three, Four, and Five, and have nothing else to report.
All right. Agenda Item Number Two is approval of minutes. Commissioners, I assume you've looked at the minutes. Any discussion? If no discussion, entertain a motion of approval.
Motion of approval.
I'll second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Aislinn, would you call the vote?
Ricks.
Yes.
Moore.
Yes.
Burnt.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Satterfield.
Yes. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Three, Preliminary Platte, Copper Creek Subdivision. Kilgore Properties LLC, Jordan Olson, Jacob and Connie Tracy, Tracy Roberts, and Kate Paulson, represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, have submitted a preliminary plat application to replat the Copper Creek subdivision. The proposal calls for the replating of 8.7 acres, more or less, into 40 lots. The property is located on Surprise Valley Road. If we could hear from the applicant.
Good evening, Commission members. My name is Mitchell Greer. I'm with Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, 600 East Elkhorn, Pocatello, representing the applicant on this proposal. So, I think everyone is familiar with this project in some level or another. Some of you have maybe been on planning and zoning when this has been presented. Some of you have probably golfed at Highland and seen this project as you kind of round hole number six and seven, and kind of as you play up eight even. So, it's a pretty well-known project. It's been under different types of planning and ownership over the last, really, probably close to 20 years that this thing has been kind of conceived. Mrs. Keller, who's here tonight, kind of originally planned a project in there, and then it transitioned to another developer who was unsuccessful with their efforts. It's been through foreclosures and repossessions and multiple, multiple developers. We, maybe two years ago, brought forth a proposal to replat this whole thing into a little bit larger lots, and then in the mix of that, it got foreclosed on again, or the person that was holding some of the financing took it back. And so, that's who we're representing at this present time. So, a little bit of history of the project. Based on the current vision of this project, they basically want to just stay with what was originally proposed by the first developers that put in this road that comes through here, and then all the backbone utilities and infrastructure. Just basically stay with that same concept. The premise was very small lots, very small homes, really, in there. I think they were more of a cottage-style type home that would be in there. We'd call them a cottage, you know, just very small. Something that really Pocatello hasn't seen much of, or even much in southeast Idaho. In other communities, they're pretty popular, but not so much here. So, they kind of proceeded to start building on the plat. It was recorded. The infrastructure was put in place, and they've constructed a few homes in here on these lots, and if you've been on the golf course, you could have seen them. But they're, and they've been fairly well-received. They're a little different look for what is normally constructed in Pocatello, but its variety is good. It's not for everyone, but a lot of people seem to like what's going on in there. There are several pre-solds. People are kind of wanting to get in that area. It's a very nice area, number one. Number two, it's, you know, it's close to the golf course, and they're maybe building a little more economical product that's something that, you know, you can get into a new home, maybe, that you wouldn't be able to in other areas. So, all that is really positive. And so, what they have done is they've tried to, I guess, deal with landscaping. I think some, you know, Mrs. Keller's here to maybe discuss a little bit about the landscaping, but they had some, I guess, concerns with some of the people that were buying lots and doing different things about how, basically, these yellow footprints that you can see, this is kind of the footprint of the house, more or less. So, the house, the way the project was originally conceived is they were going to build on these yellow squares, and that was going to be the house. And then whatever was outside the houses was essentially going to be just open space. So, everybody owns it, you know, your dog runs in the open space, or however that is. You can't fence it, but... And so, that maybe wasn't as, I guess, for our area, people maybe wanted just a little bit more space than just owning their home. And based on what type of buyers are actually getting in there, they kind of looked at reconfiguring that. And so, we're keeping, basically, all the same concepts, except for we're trying to just replat these lots into kind of a little bit more of a lot. So, the houses will be still built within the same prism as they were going to be originally built, but when someone buys it now, they will get this actual lot. So, that gives them some ability to maybe do some things in the backyard, or maybe, you know, have a little bit of space, outdoor space, that would be their own private space. So, that's really what we're trying to do here. We're not changing the number of lots, the number of houses, really, the configuration. Everything's been built. A couple of things that they have done is they're, this was going to all be private in here, kind of a gated community-type style. It was originally conceived, the gate is not going to be there anymore. They're in the process of kind of constructing this secondary access that would connect down to South Von Elm. I don't know if that's a condition in there, but that's been in the mix there for a while. They've been doing quite a little bit of work on the water system to bring it up to standards again because it's sat there for so long. But in general, it's the same project that you've seen for 20 years, well, 15 years, I guess. And so, we're not really asking to change anything of significance, in my opinion. There is still going to be some common lots there where the ponds are, and there's going to be some accesses preserved into the golf course and some different things like that. So, there's, there still will be some association-owned properties within the plat, but for the majority of that extra space, we're going to try to just give it to the lot owners. So, I think that's it. Hopefully, that's enough to kind of give you enough information to find that this is pretty consistent with the goals of the original project and certainly the goals of the city.
Thank you, Mitch. Are there questions for Mitch?
What are the proposed home prices for these things?
I really don't know too much, but I think they're, almost all of them are under 300, which is pretty rare for new construction in our environment right now.
Julie.
When I drove down there, I think I remember that there were existing homes at the end of the cul-de-sac there. Are they aware that this is changing, or are any of them unhappy that, I guess, are any of them unhappy that now all of a sudden they also have a lot to deal with?
So, everyone that is party to the application that had purchased or is purchased those homes.
Okay.
So, they were sold under the premise, you know, we were working on this at that time.
Okay.
When those transactions went forward, and they were, everybody's in favor of it that's down in there.
What can you tell us about, so the island there and the street? My understanding is it's going into right-of-way, or is that going to be held as association property?
I think the island is probably going to be part of the right-of-way, but it's going to be maintained by the association.
Very good.
We, that's one of the common areas that we're intending to have maintained by the association.
Right.
And they're going to, it's not going to look like it does now. We're intending on doing some landscaping in there.
Agreed.
Improving it.
Any other questions for Mitch?
What's changed in the marketplace that makes this a more viable option now than it was 20 years ago?
I think it might have been popular 20 years ago if they would have been successful, you know, when the market crashed back in the day. It just, everything fell apart. So, I think if they would have gone forward, there might have been, you know, there might have been a market there. This was, you know, I think when the current owner and the builder that's in there now were really unsure whether or not it was going to be successful even to this point. But they put a few houses in there. They've sold, have, everything that's been built has been sold. They have several pre-solds in there now, and there's people wanting additional units. So, it's, you know, I don't know really what has happened. I think maybe some of our, you know, you hear about some of these jobs that are people coming into town, and maybe this is more of something that they've had, you know, in other areas are more familiar with it. And so, I think the time has probably done it well. We just don't have something like this in Pocatello, and it seems like it's working right now, anyway.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mitch. Matt, if we could get the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Commission members. Matt, he was senior planner with the city. Mitch gave a good kind of background on this, and so I won't belabor you on that. We'll just mention again, there's no real significant changes in terms of the lots other than they're just, what is, what was like Lot Eight, I think, that was going to be open space, is just being included in those lots. The other, one of the positives is, again, with Sun Valley, Sun Valley Road, and then that extension that was at the end of the kind of the temporary cul-de-sac there, was actually proposed to be private, one time gated. That is going to be going away. Now, the road will be public and infrastructure and so forth, public. So, I know they're working with Mitch or with Merrill on that. Other thing is, is that when the original plat came in, one of the concerns were, really, with fire department was the number of units that was already on bench, and then including the units that were being added on into Surprise Valley. And there had to be a secondary access for it to even be considered. And so, the secondary was entitled, the emergency access, was going to be kind of that, you can see that little extension that would be extended over to Von Elm Road. That originally was going to be a private, private emergency exit. Now, we're requiring that that be a public street. It'll be like 29 feet in width, which is a little smaller than normal, but that's actually a positive, that it be public. Again, the footprints, you can see, you can see them on the either original plat or on the proposed replat, where you have some dotted areas there. Those are the areas that are for billable area. There's a condition in there that additions, construction beyond that, the footprints will be prohibited. So, even though the areas, that kind of that open space area in the rear is going to be added into the lot, they won't be able to build into that. And so, I think that's about all I'd like to add on to it. So, do we have any questions for staff?
So, as they are kind of confined in their building to those original areas, they can still fence their property line, I would assume?
Yes.
It's just the structure itself we need to stay with in there?
Yep. And as far as the final plat is concerned, we'll make sure, I have to chat with Merrill in terms of the kind of that dolmit area, I guess, in there, and see if that needs to be a lot with a note on there that, you know, has some, because I thought that was a little odd myself. So, we'll have to probably look at that and clarify that.
Questions for Matt?
So, the secondary access road that goes to Von Elm?
Mm-hmm.
That's a gravel road right now. So, the applicant's going to asphalt all the way to the Von Elm Road?
Yeah. They don't have curb, curb and gutter.
Good.
I don't know about sidewalk in terms of if on both sides and so forth, but the road itself will be built to city standards.
And would that be a condition of final plat? Like, how does, how, is there a time?
I actually thought, I actually thought it was in Merrill's memo, because we've talked about it numerous times. But I didn't see it in there, so I think that will have to be clarified for the final plat.
Other questions? All right. Thank you, Matt. All commissioners, discussion?
Would you recommend speaking? Can I have any? It's totally up to you.
Okay. Yes, I would give you up to three minutes.
Yeah, thank you.
If you'll state your name and where you're from.
My name is Marlene Keller. I live at 1648 Surprise Valley Road, and I'm involved, I was involved and still am a, on the development of the first phase, which is Surprise Valley. This phase was supposedly the second phase of Surprise Valley until James Brainerd and some other people started advertising it, that they owned it, and I gave them the choice of either buying it or basically going to jail, because I was ready to, so I had to, I was, didn't want to go that route, so I sold the property to them. We had every intention of this being just an extension of the first phase, and it would have been lots just like the first phase. But in doing that, and that was on February 2007, I made conditions. One is that we had approval of the final CCNRs. Now, there is CCNRs at this piece of property, and this property was advertised, that it would look like this, for over a year. Okay? Now, that has landscaping. There is no proposed landscaping CCNRs. And in fact, when I talked to them today, they proposed, you know, trees, just rocks, a little bit of grass, and zero landscaping. They said they thought the city would want that, but I believe the city's standards have not changed. You still have to put landscaping in front. So, the people that bought in all but, I would say, two, all but four lots, which are townhouse lots that are still owned and will be built on by the developer, are sold. So, all the people up above believe that there will be landscaping, and they have every, this is what was shown, and I'd be glad to give that to you if you want to look at it. So, I just, I, we're just at a impasse. There's two things that they have to do. In the CCNRs now, they have, so what you're doing is if you let this go on without this being resolved, is you're taking away the fact that they don't have to, and they've agreed they will take care of the water retention areas now, but it isn't in writing yet, and I'd like to see it in writing before it goes on. And secondly, I'd like to see a landscape. That's it. And so will everybody else. My attorney told me that the thing we have to look for in the city and everybody else is a real estate term called, what's the next word? Equitable servitude. Hadn't heard it before, had to look it up, legal term, but that's means that, what the people expect from the original homeowners coming down that road is what they thought was proposed. And everything else, I totally agree with. Okay?
Yeah.
I just think that they need to do the landscaping, and if you're going to approve this, please add that, that they have to have landscaping in their CCNRs that they will, that will be approved. And second, that they follow the deeded restrictions that they, for the homeowners' association to pay the homeowners' association for Surprise Valley for the maintenance and repair of the water system, or the retention ponds in the common areas in that area too. And that everything in that area except one in the entrance from Surprise Valley with some trees on one side, everything is to maintain the water that comes down there. And one thing you have to understand is all of the water from Satterfields come down this valley. So, it's pretty important, and I appreciate you giving me a minute. Thank you.
Thank you, Marlene. Okay, commissioners, comments and discussion?
I really like the extra public access on this road. I think it's important.
Yeah.
I've played on this golf course a couple of times, and the last 15 years, it's always been a little bit of an eyesore, and I'm glad that it will hopefully have some homes on it soon.
I suppose the only comment that I really have is that I appreciate these somewhat smaller lots and the, basically, the use of infill at this point. I mean, not 100%, but, you know, there's not a whole lot else that I think folks would be able to do with it. So, I like that you're really maximizing your space for the amount of personnel and residences that it could handle. That's nice to see.
I guess I'd like to address a few of the Keller's concerns. In my view, I can understand the concern for having been shown a plan, and that plan not necessarily being what is occurring. I think that our role as a planning and zoning commission is to make sure that we are meeting the goals and objectives of the, you know, the city. And I think that in these developments, a lot of times, there are going to be a number of private agreements that are made, and where that line sits between how much the city gets involved in those private agreements, it can kind of be one of those gray areas where cities can come in and define and dictate things such as landscaping. I think for the most part, the cities stay out of homeowners' associations. As a city, we would run the risk if we are approving something that isn't legally viable, perhaps that can come back on us. The information that we've been given probably leans more towards that there isn't necessary, like, we've not been given information on HOA agreements or anything that's been said there. And so, with the information we have, you know, there aren't necessarily any conditions relating to having the landscaping or the HOA become a part of it, but it has been presented to us, and as a commission, we certainly have the right to have that discussion and see if those are things that need to be pulled into it. And I appreciate the Keller's being here. Sometimes we don't always get a ton of participation from the public, so...
Yeah.
Any other thoughts or comments?
I'm inclined to agree with you when it comes to the homeowners and the association, and also with the, put the plants and whatever around the facility, excuse me, around the area. I'm not sure that's where we want to be headed. There's a good, there's a lot to be said for, you know, following guidelines, and I think that the precedent's been set, and that we should follow the guidelines that are set before us here. So, I guess that's all I'd have to say, but I personally have a little heartburn with us entering into that part of it.
Any other discussion or any motions that would like to be presented?
I don't know that we're going to take further comments. I'm sorry.
I don't think we're going to open it back up, so... We appreciate it, but I think we're going to continue with our discussion here. Thank you. This is a recommendation to the city council that we're making on whether or not to approve this with the conditions that have been outlined. Anybody like to make a recommendation motion?
I will.
Okay, Julia?
Muddle through this. I would like to move that we recommend approval of the preliminary plat to replat the approximate 7.64 acres of Copper Creek subdivision with the conditions that have been set forth by staff.
I'll second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Aislinn, would you call the vote?
Sanders?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
Burnt?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Satterfield.
Yes. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Four, Preliminary Platte, Juniper Reserve Division Three. Billy Satterfield of Juniper Land Corp., represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, has submitted a preliminary plat application to subdivide 8.18 acres into 13 residential lots. The property is located east of Juniper Reserve Division Two on an extension of Shadow Pines Way. If we could hear from the applicant?
Mitchell Greer with Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, representing the So, Juniper Reserve Division Three is going to be this kind of shaded box that you can see here. This is Shadow Pines. This is the LDS church that's off of Michelle Street. So, this is Michelle Street here. Satterfield Drive is down to the west, so... So the, the site, um, we, we brought several divisions of this subdivision. These first, uh, first couple have been constructed and have been pretty successful. Uh, this, this next phase is kind of nice because it completes this link to Shadow Pines. Um, so this is kind of the last little leg that will kind of create that loop through the neighborhood. It'll give multiple accesses and different things in and out there. So that's going to be kind of a nice addition. Right now, um, this is the last area that can be developed from the top. And so we have to go back down to the bottom of the hill to start developing to bring the utilities up. So this is kind of the last little link that, uh, can be developed at the top of the hill. Um, one of the things in the staff report, uh, why we like to do planning, um, so as this kind of property develops, there's kind of a natural low point right here in the road, which is why this pipe was extended up. So we kind of talked to Merrill a little bit about that. Uh, the city really has some concerns and issues with pipes, um, extending outside the rideaways, really utilities in general, which we understand, but I don't think everybody wants a waterfall in their backyard. So there has to be some sort of compromise there, um, because this really truly is going to be a spot where the water collects. And it's uphill this way and it's uphill this way. So it's going to come down here whether we have a pipe there or not. So the, the compromise, I think, is that we, this, this really does make a nice spot for a, a connection, a trail, a path, a paved path between these two, uh, between these two areas. And so I think that'll be a nice way that the city will provide the cities of maintenance, will provide some connectivity between the two, kind of two neighborhoods that have been created there. And I think that will resolve that issue. I think that's really the only, the only thing that was in the, uh, the staff report, um, that was of any concern. I think we're just continuing on, um, with this development that's been very successful. All the homes, all the lots have been sold in there and then, uh, constructed on up to this point. Um, it's a very desirable location people want to live and, and this will be a nice addition to what's, uh, what's happening. But just answer questions if there are any. If not, I'd just ask that you approve it.
Thank you, Mitch. And so from the drawings, I'm seeing it's just storm that is proposed to come down through there. You're able to get sanitary sewer to still flow.
We can get sanitary sewer a little easier out of there.
Okay.
So yeah, right now it's just storm.
And so you're then proposing that, that there's still be an easement there, but with a pathway over it?
Yeah, so maybe it'll be a common lot. I don't know exactly how we're going to do it. We'll work with staff to figure out what'll be acceptable. But it's going to be a 25, 20-foot wide strip there that will have our utility corridor in. And it'll be likely be paved that we can just connect between the two neighborhoods. But, you know, if they have to get a truck or something up through there, they could drive on it. We've done that at a couple of other spots, I think, so, and some of the stuff on the north end there.
Sure. Questions for Mitch?
Can we talk about that a little bit more? And can you zoom in so we're closer to where you're talking about?
So it says purple line.
Okay.
So one of the things that you can see is that we didn't really perceive that to become an issue until, um, later on in our planning. We, we really haven't, you know, we did kind of concept layouts up here and we kind of were thinking about how it was going to work, but we didn't realize that this, there was going to be kind of a low spot created in this with her, with our design, until we got into a little more detailed design. So, you know, we planned it, but we don't catch everything in that first swoop. So these lots aren't lined up. We're going to have to, we're going to have to modify this upper layout to kind of coincide with a, a line that could come out of there.
So the trail that is existing right now, is that going to cease to exist throughout those neighborhoods?
This trail here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's going to be, that'll be gone.
Okay.
And they don't, um, right now, you can kind of see, this is basically just on the edge of the, the edge of the rim there. They don't own, this is the bottom of the, of the draw that kind of backs up to. Uh, that's privately owned right now, but at one time that was going to be part of a kind of a trail system that we presented to the city some time ago, that I don't think the city was all that excited about. So I, I'm not sure if there's going to be necessarily much public access through there or not at this point.
Okay, I mean, I mean, from the map, it looks like, how, how could you even potentially put a, a trail through there? Because you're going through so many.
Well, this is just, this is just going to be a paved path that's going to connect between there to there, from street to street. Be almost like a sidewalk is what it would be. Yeah, and you can't really tell how it's going to go just because we haven't really designed it. It's still kind of in the preliminary stage. But we will line the lots up and then there'll be a, a 20, 20-foot wide kind of connection there.
Other questions for Mitch? All right, thank you, Mitch. Matt, if we could hear from staff?
Chair of commission members, Matthew Lewis, senior planner. Um, yeah, so as Mitch noted, um, in this division, we have 13 lots, single family. Um, they all meet minimum lot sizes. You can see that there are portions of these lots that would meet the slope development standards. So when they submit that, their final plat, they'll have to submit some information. And that's a condition, um, that's noted in the staff report. Uh, the, the condition, um, and Mitch was alluding to, um, is in Merrill's memo, specifically under development conditions number two. Um, and the last sentence reads, "Future storm pipe located between lots two and three of block two will not be permitted." Um, I know Merrill talked with Mitch late, uh, this afternoon and basically, uh, they, they kind of both agreed. Um, and they had, uh, basically staff would like some latitude. Just work with the engineer to kind of figure out the, the plan. So it just deals with, again, that stormwater pipe that's run across those lots there. Um, other than that, I think, I don't have really anything else to add on this. Eventually, so you'll see in the next phase, um, Division Four, which is farther down, you'll have in the middle, well, those two will connect to that. Um, but I'll have Mitch kind of give an overview of that and get, get that in. Any questions?
Just to make sure the verbiage is correct, okay? Is that you were okay with the storm system? But you will, you want to have the ability to talk more about it with Mitch? Because I think that's what Mitch was saying, exactly the same thing. You're saying the same thing, right?
Yeah, it just allows staff, allows staff latitude to work on, with, on condition number two. Instead of just outright saying it's not permitted, we'll just work, work through that.
Perfect.
Other questions from Matt?
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Discussion?
I'll give my opinion on the, uh, uh, utility going up between lot lines. It's been a very common practice. We've used for years. I know that the city has run into a few situations where perhaps a homeowner has landscaping or fencing or something that crosses over that and the city is trying to push more to get those places where they have utilities underground into either the city's name or left wide open, um, in, in some way. So I think that there's a, a number of different directions they can go with this. Whether, you know, it is an easement with a restriction that, you know, you can't be fenced, to ask to stay open and a path come through it, uh, or creating a separate lot. Um, my only concern with creating a separate lot is, I think that there has to be something in place that is going to, uh, make that maintained, um, and, and keep it aesthetically, uh, matching the, the rest of the development. Um, and I don't know that the city is too excited about going in and landscaping and doing that. Um, but I do know of, uh, ones in, in developments that we've done where the neighboring property owner actually has taken on that right, much like in a park strip out front that the city, that's in the city right of way, but the homeowner that lives there is required to maintain it. Things like that can be done and I do think that there needs to be more flexibility with allowing these designs to occur, especially as you get into these hillsides and, uh, you have limitations on what the design can do.
Any other discussion or any motions? Anyone, thoughts or concerns?
No, I do certainly think that that is correct in that they need to give the staff some latitude to be able to work with the engineer and, uh, to work out the kinks that need to be worked out here. I say kinks, but you know what I mean.
I'll make a motion to approve this agenda item with the staff conditions and with the term that, uh, the engineer and we'll work with staff to, uh, work on that problem.
Very good. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion or questions on the motion?
So another recommend approval versus straight up approval, right?
It is.
Yeah, recommend approval.
Yes. Sorry. Thank you, Jimmy.
Mm-hmm.
All right, Eastland, would you call the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Barnes?
Yes.
Rex?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Satterfield?
Yes. Motion carries. Agenda item number five, preliminary plat, Juniper Reserve Division Four. Billy Satterfield of Juniper Land Corp., represented by Rocky Mountain Engineering and Surveying, has submitted a preliminary plat application to subdivide 4.58 acres into 10 residential lots. The property is located south of Juniper Reserve Division One on an extension of Winson Lane.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to present this last project, but, uh, basically we're in the same area. This is going to create another kind of loop, just like we have here on Shadow Pines and kind of similar to what was created earlier in the Partridge Development. So it's just kind of following that same, that same theme, uh, kind of a little bit smaller developments. But, uh, this is just, uh, I think, kind of in ta, in anticipation of maybe next year construction. We're just trying to maybe get a little bit ahead. So this will start, um, just this Winson Lane that's, that we're kind of finishing up in the last, uh, last development. So the reason why we have to come back down the hills, we've got to bring sewer up. So this is as far as sewer will drain out back the other way. So now we're starting at the bottom to kind of bring the utilities up to provide the, the service that we need. And one thing about those things, you know, it's, it's, it, uh, on the previous item where we talked about that step, Ryan kind of alluded to it, you know, we get in the hills and sometimes we just don't have a choice. Like, you can't run a road. Like, everybody wants the utilities in the road, but sometimes you can't run a road where the utilities need to go because it's too steep or, you know, it just doesn't make sense. And so we're not in the flats like in Chubik, you don't run into these issues. But in Pocatello and the benches, sometimes we just have problems solving all the problems. So anyway, I, we appreciate the staff willing to kind of compromise and help us out there to, to make that work. Because I think it'll be, it really putting that trail in there will make a good, a good solution there. So anyway, this is kind of the same, same theme. Uh, we're about to the end of, uh, the property that's been annexed for development. I think we've got, probably going to have to do another annex when we bring the next project forward. So anyway, if you have questions, let us know. Not, we'd ask that you approve it.
Any questions for Mitch on this one? Thank you, Mitch. All right, Matt?
Matthew Lewis, um, senior planner. Just two, a couple items just very quick. Um, first of all, the property is a residential low-vacity. Uh, the minimum lot size required is 7,500 square feet. The smallest lot being proposed is 13,000, a little over 13,000 square feet, so plenty large enough. Um, not as much as in the Division Three, but still, um, there are some slope issues. So I'll have to do a slope analysis, uh, for the final plat. That's reflected in the conditions, um, that are in the staff report. Um, staff would recommend approval, um, of the plat with the conditions as outlined. And just the other thing is, is Mitch is correct in that probably in the next division that comes in, they'll have to do an animation on that because they're pretty well right at the end of the corporate line at this point. That's all I have.
Thank you, Matt. Are there questions from Matt? Thank you. Oh, did you have one?
I do, sorry. And, and it's not something that is very specific to, um, this application or proposal. Um, just a, a general thing for, I guess, my, my soul. Um, I know sometimes we, we have applications where if you rip out trees, you have to, um, put trees back in, right? Um, is there anything in any code, bylaw, whatever, about relocating or, um, planning for trail systems when they, when they are covered up? Because, you know, I don't, I don't, I hope, I wasn't involved with all of the pretty lines that Mitch has on his paper there. Um, but it's pretty evident that, that a couple of those existing trails are going to be completely gone. Um, which feels like, I mean, it's probably going to take years and years, but, um, just generally, is there anything that says trails should be replaced, relocated, anything like that?
No.
Okay.
No, but we.
Could there be? Not to pick on you or, or this project, just.
Yeah, typically, well, I mean, especially, so we're going way back, but when, when the lower Satterfield, uh, started to develop and move up, there's a couple canyons there. One's Bluebird Canyon, I think it's the one on the southern end. And then there's another one that's up above that, that, um, that, you know, those are pretty significant for purpose of recreation and mostly stormwater and so forth. And then there was a, you know, there's a, you know, some large junipers in there that were retained because of those two issues. were retained because of those two issues, mainly drainage, recreation and so forth. In this case, I mean, when you get into these junipers and so forth, and of course they're natural, but we were starting to get into, you know, fire hazard areas and stuff like that. And fire department's actually going to say, no, we need 30 feet of, you know, defensible space and so forth. So there's nothing, there's nothing in the code that requires that, especially in this case where, where you have natural vegetation, but you have to replace that. That would be true, say, on Yellowstone Avenue, if there's a mature tree, say, I tried my heart, just to, just to throw one out there, if they had a maple tree, just decided to cut it down, then code does say, if you're going to cut it down, it hasn't been approved, then you need to replace it with two trees somewhere in the property. But in this case, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be true.
And I guess to take that a little further too, I think it should also be noted that the trails that are currently existing there are kind of, they're not an organized trail. People technically could be trespassing, the property owners have allowed that to kind of occur, but it is private property. It's not necessarily any type of organized trail. I think if there are organized trails that have been dedicated, that have easements, obviously the development has to go around that. This probably becomes more of a private property rights thing where the property owner is allowing people to use that property for the time being, but would have the right to go in and develop it as well.
So what is the trail on my right hand side?
For this one out?
Yeah. That big one. Is that a road?
Yes, that's Ridgewood Road.
Ridgewood?
Yep.
Could I add just a little bit on the trail?
Sure.
And Ryan probably remembers this, but we honestly presented, we came in in combination with Cedar Crest and with, with Satterfield Realty and Development at the time, with kind of a big master plan for these draws and we were going to have a trail system and it was going to be wonderful and we were going to preserve a lot of the junipers and things like that. And the council at the time basically said, city doesn't want it. They don't want the, they don't want the, they don't want the maintenance responsibilities. They don't want it necessarily. They wanted all that stuff to remain private, with the exception of a couple of trails, a couple of draws. We were kind of trying to get a more comprehensive, larger look at that area. And again, at the time, they basically said the city's not in a position to take on the liability, the responsibility, the, any of it. So it kind of fell by the wayside. The development kind of transitioned away from that as much as possible, and so that's kind of where it, where it got. Another thing about the junipers, you know, we love them and we fought to keep them up there. In fact, some of the developments insured the junipers because they were the, you know, preserved the characteristic of their development. But now, as we come in, basically we're, we're being told we have to remove a good share of them, even on the last project. I don't know how much you saw that. They asked us to remove a big chunk of the junipers up there. So it's kind of a little bit sad, but I think for safety, that's kind of where we're headed. So anyway, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to ask a couple of questions if you don't mind. And these are just thoughts in my head. Is there any other area in Boca Tello where a trail system has been built under similar circumstances, but it's been allowed and it's been built?
I'm not really sure. I mean, I think there's some of the stuff over on City Creek side, but as far as what's happened, you know, overall development with the trails, I'm not aware of it.
Okay. And the last question, given that we're talking several years ago that this seemed to be a bad idea, times change. There are a lot of youth out there now. Where, where, in our economy here in Boca Tello, there are a lot of youth. And I was wondering, is there any way or any thoughts that this might be something that'll be viable in the future? Or do you see it just going by the wayside, period?
Well, I think what's happened is a lot of the opportunity has been lost because of the way it's developed now.
Okay.
So, you know, again, this was going to be, you know, one of those corridors, I believe. And, you know, there's still, you know, there's still some corridors here. This is off of Summit Drive, so there's, you know, there's an opportunity to get some of that. And that would actually ultimately could tie right to the BLM, which would be a nice spot. So I think the city should maybe target that one as a, as a possibility. It's on the north side of this development, you know, to kind of keep that connectivity. And I think they probably will, obviously, because it makes sense. And a lot of the, you know, again, a lot of the views of that area has changed in the last 15 years from when we were trying to do it. But part of our, part of our, you know, our concern, we were trying to get a trail that came up through here, you know, it was going to have to exit at this location, but then pick up another, you know, another draw. So anyway, we, I think that the times are a little different. We've lost some of the opportunity to take advantage of what could have been up there, but I think, you know, we still have some opportunities.
It just seems like a shame to lose that type of resource for, for the individuals.
Especially ones that provide good connection to the public lands too, which some of these corridors really kind of run for a couple miles in the city and then touch the BLM. And that's, that's ones we definitely want to look at.
Okay.
Any items before you commissioners? How would you like to proceed?
I'll make a motion. I'd like to motion to recommend approval of the preliminary plat application for the proposed 10-lot subdivision to be known as Juniper Reserve Division Four, with any conditions laid out by staff.
I'll second that.
There's been a motion and a second. Eastland, would you call the vote?
Sanders?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Burnt?
Yes.
Ricks?
Yes.
Satterfield.
Yes, motion carries. And that concludes our business for the evening. Thank you for coming.